All right, it is six o'clock, we're going to get started on the external head discussions. And in the sixth to seventh hour, it will be strictly try ahead and happy to see all the people that turned out. We'll get to talk about that tomorrow. All right, let's get started.
Mayor of the council, I'll put your hand on my microphone. We're going to do a quick overview, our whole presentation is less than ten minutes. Our goal is that you have an opportunity to ask us questions, weigh in on the project. At the end of all of this, what we would really like to know is what's our next step? Because we presented earlier the scope, and tonight more the goal of the financing, the budget aspects of various scenarios. So now, we're going to cover the scenarios briefly. The design and construction costs as have been estimated and starting to answer those questions. The financing, RJ's going to talk about it, the net, the budget is going to talk about. And over the course of the evening, if you have questions on golf, Chris and Mr. Alvin are going to help you ask them. So now, we'll go to the first slide. And this is kind of where I call the punchline or the end of the presentation. We put them all together up front, so we don't have to wait till the end of the presentation to find out how this thing is cost. So, these are five scenarios, I think, that are numbered a little bit different than before, other than the same scenario that we presented. Scenario one is an updated facility, an elevator, and range improvements. A nominal which is code, dress and coat issues at the golf course. Number two is a clubhouse, a new clubhouse, range improvements, and it's made of amenities, 3.9 million. You know, RJ's going to go through these more depth, I'm not going to. So for the sake of purposes, one through five, the range of 3.39 million, and then options, scenarios two, four, and five are all 3.9. So in that, also, we'll go with RJ.
Okay, last slide. So, we look at the first scenario, which is just the $3.39 million design and construction, which is updating the existing facility, adding the elevator, parking, nice range improvements, and the driving range. For many, poles are included now, a golf course. Remember from our estimates, I think last year, our range goes out, problem points by itself, so looking at facility improvements on various problem points. So, you can see there are a couple slides, and there were pictures on them, the executive summary that was being, uh, Friday. It goes through those pictures that I want to be, uh, on.
RJ, what is the extended range? The leader is, you can't go any further east.
Uh, the driving range in this one is the same, it just gets better.
It's not extending, it's not, uh, extended.
Yes.
So high, just high.
Not extendable.
Okay.
Same like.
I was confused, it was extended range.
Same. In this second one, uh, scenario, it is looking at a new clubhouse, we use a new footprint for that. So, when we're looking at the executive summary, in the, uh, within the, uh, PowerPoint, we had, um, we had some clarification on the two level driving range. It's a two deck, and the original slide had suggested that it was two levels, all one level, all the scenarios, just one level. Uh, scenarios, I believe, uh, four and five across all nine areas. So, it's only, it's only two that are, that's why it's crossed out, the one, um, the one you got the weekend, did not have it crossed out. Uh, in this one, there are some amenities added, uh, where you see snagging all, uh, here, here, and then that's event meeting space, and that scenario as well. And then we'll show the connection. Scenario three, uh, you're looking at similar footprints to what exists there today, but adding on to the building, um, expand, uh, adding on the building. The driving range now has moved, so instead of being off to the left, it has now moved up on center, uh, with the same clubhouse at that. The old range has turned some other amenities, which include the snag, um, the snag course, they've all set up, like some travel connections, some green space. Um, there's also the event meeting space included in the scenario as well, mini golf, and this one about 7.6 million. From there, we go into scenario four. Uh, so this one addresses a new clubhouse, um, maybe old ones, a little sitting right here, the new clubhouse is older, uh, to the east. Uh, they have a new driving range setup, uh, matched to the 300 yards, but if the new driving range has set up, it would have been higher than that, so the entire thing. Uh, the amenities, you see that other, the snag, we all, you pick them all, the travel and the space, and the event meeting space. In scenario five, it's, it's, this one they point out, so scenario five is the same scenario, but it suggests it he, uh, it, but it changes where some of the amenities have been sitting, and suggests selling off some property. So, where their estimate, in those people's executive summary, has about 2.3 million sale of property, so we have these two passes here. But moving, uh, in scenario four, it had a mini golf base pattern, it has moved the mini golf over, uh, what, uh, the driver and the exact. It still has all the same amenities, so it's just a different floor plan. Uh, we look at construction design at 8.9 million, so that goes to, uh, so the same as number four in cost, but when I go through the new select, you'll see where it kind of reduces the overall debt, uh, that we've got to take out. So, uh, some options for try ahead, uh, from the financial, lots of debt service, these are, uh, options. Every single one of the scenario, but the other kind of four, one, we work with that by, uh, my stock, that's sell an asset. For an asset, the other one is using existing cash balances. We, we are due, or we are due to get our Orchard Park lift money, uh, should we win the commission on March 10th. So, that means that we can run a part of that cash flow process, we're going to, uh, fund them about $3.6 million, two of those funds altogether. So, by saying that, you do have some existing cash balances, the most funds that we're used to drop to the problem debt they desire. Those are REITs, uh, means real estate and size taxes, uh, these taxes, uh, are on sale property, and happen to be used for capital, high values, like trucking. Uh, you can issue debt, so on this one, it talks about the non-voted general creation bond, or also the credit council mat bond. In this one, if you're going to issue it, you're identifying a revenue source to cover the annual debt payments. Uh, REIT can be a source of covering that annual debt payment, also general fund. Um, I did the little peternemical course, if money is available, can also go and use to pay for that debt. But, when you go to finance this one, you're, the, the bonding agency is going to be looking for, um, a kind of strong revenue source, um, to pay that off. You can also go out to the voters and ask for a vote bond, which that may increase because of taxes. So, uh, I'm ready. So, one of the assumptions that we made is that we're going to go out and issue debt, it would be a 20-year bond. We can issue a 15-year, we can issue a 30-year, we focused on the 20-year. With looking at the 20, we start off with, uh, looking at each design scenario, and I have them paced, so, uh, of the construction cost. Um, in the executive summary, there's an estimate of revenue, which, uh, for each of the five scenarios, what Staples put together, what, uh, what they thought the course would bring in over those 20 years. So, that's a 20-year number. Uh, estimated expenses, O M, and, and debt service. Shouldn't, it, when it says debt service, that's the capital portion of the debt service, not the interest. When you're looking at 25.5, sorry, I'm using math there. It's so much different, you don't need your head in your desk when you're looking at a basic. 25.5 million, if you back up with 3.3, and then you're 22.2 million, that's the operation maintenance cost before construction and debt service. One item, so we saw that they did not have included in the, um, the executive summary, is the rotation of the fleet. So, as a tractor, as a golf course become old, that number wasn't built in there, so we built that, uh, number in there. About $2 million over 20-year period seem, um, uh, to be a big number to budget for, the budget might be $90,000 a year now in our fee rotation. And we'll look back for the last six years, so that's what that $2 million number is there for. Then we have the interest that's on the debt service. So, when I say debt service here, this is really debt construction capital, this is the interest would be on that debt service in each of these scenarios. Scenario five, this one includes some lands, so you see the estimate revenue is higher in scenario four, it's because we sold property for about 2.4 million. You see that because they sold property, we're also assuming that we use that to drop down the debt service, that's why the interest is lower on their person, for, so if you think about, if I paid $2.4 million on the debt service, I'm saving about $900,000 in interest over that 20 years. And then this last one's net cost between these scenarios. Uh, over 20 years, this is what is the forecast is showing. So, uh, scenario three and scenario five are the ones that are, barely scenario three, but scenario five are the ones that show the profit that they left in years, the other ones are. This is looking at that same 20 years, but the difference is, what if we paid down $2 million in cash, and then issued debt for the rest? So, when you flip back and forth, you can see, um, the interest on the debt service, for instance, in scenario one, goes from, uh, $1 million to 1.4. Based on environment, that's a shorter amount at that time. And the other scenarios, you see, uh, slight, more slight reduction of about $400,000 in some cases, um, all the way down to $700,000. And then you see in that scenario, the net cost, uh, other than the first two items, the rest of them usually positive. So, we've covered a lot right now. We've dealt with three as well. At this point, we want to see what kind of questions, comments you have, next steps, you have scattered the construction, Chris for, uh, operations on course. You got your staff here to help answer questions, and capital debt comments.
RJ, could you tell me about your observations of the revenue forecast, specifically the level of detail that you're able to turn? I'm just curious about what, um, I'd say, I don't know, is it pessimistic or optimistic insofar as what could be made in terms of revenue?
Uh, optimistic. I think, I think one of the things when we dive through, uh, looking at this, I asked Chris quite a bit, especially in the range plays, when he thought he was comfortable with it. I think one of the things that always comes to concern, we kind of heard a lot of the others didn't help either. We looked at, for the strong get capable, because that was one of those untested revenue source for us in there. But when we offset it, we really kind of, kind of analyzed it, that was also one of the lesser expensive amenities. So, for a small amount of investment, could there be a long tail of that, or worse? And also the staples, really, we looked at, um, what their experience was going into that, what they saw, people that were more planning, they would come and play, they would come to the restaurant, or sit on the table, or, you know, so that was more of an experience than, um, because they, they roll for free right now. What's the difference, um, setting, uh, we're just going to use your course, and, uh, have more, or, they roll up there. The, the expenses, I think one thing we looked at was miscellaneous expenses we looked at before our pass, that's kind of where the operationally, talking staples, that's where we looked at contingency. So, if you think about the numbers, they, they kind of said, we were, we were just kind of hedging the bet a little bit, with about an eight to 10% of contingency on it, that we haven't, not been identifiable, just a few large costs, uh, going through. So, we know the course, as it sits, uh, with our C operation down there, it's not going to be, you're going to see in the act, far, uh, simple that, when you do some of the other expenses that we gave them, it's, um, those are the debt service.
Uh, the question is on the frequent end now. Is the $2 million of the, this payment adds to a strictly important facility, or will you share it with others?
The $2 million was strictly looking at the golf carts, the capital equipment that adds on course. So, it's worth course, and I started from up in this area.
The $2 million is strictly for equipment to maintain the facility at the whole term.
Did I even properly that there's a lot in any of these scenarios, the option for the double decker and garden range?
That is correct.
Why do you want to hide that?
It just wasn't included in the cost.
They were pushing it a lot.
They, they felt they could add range spots, they're giving it to course, really not necessarily, maybe they want to do that, see our goal, which is to all, and then probably build up the options to build up the secondary. So, you might do a little more BP, um, you know, based, or with no, they might go, go vertical later.
So, with this, how many slots would we be getting if we were to move the driving range? How many spaces will we get?
Twenty-five, twenty-five covered, and then the grass area was about 10 to 15. So, right now, yeah, right now, we're at, say, about 23 slots between grass and, and covered and uncovered. What Andy and I liked about it, the covered portion of it, you thought 25, and then if it was to double, then we'd get 50, but it wasn't a hard number. Instead of 25, we can make it 30, we can make it 32, once it was decided where it was going to be, or if it was going to move into see the site. And then at that point, could decide, okay, 25 is going to cost this, 30 is going to cost this, 32 is going to cost that, we got that. Once it got down to the, the fine details, we could figure out from there, what they could give us. They weren't, I wasn't, and they weren't comfortable with diving in with all 50, going from basically 14 covered, or 10 covered, really, to 50, that was a big jump. So, it was more of a, um, a conversation between the two of us, maybe 25 and 15, or 25 and 12 was a better starter.
I was just going to add, if the council wants us to get a good hard number, the, the double decker is not off the table, it's certainly a consideration. We can bring back a, a exact cost of how many and how much. That might be helpful, because I, I'm surprised that it's not in there, but that's okay, I think we can ask them to add the double decker. Only in the scenarios where the driving range is along the road.
Right.
So, we can get some good hard numbers on both space and all.
I think a important thing to keep in mind, if we do consider moving to double, is at the height of that, and it's only going to be a double, the hill basically be a double, if the, if the driving range is moved, then it's going to be right, right in the view of the cutouts.
So, when talking to Andy, he, when I talked to him about that, he, so that they would dig into the hill to make sure that the top of the, even if it was a double decker, that the land and the top of the double decker would all be together, it wouldn't be up above the top. So, basically, it would just be like land that goes out, um, further, I guess, of course, on that.
There's just, the topography allows, but if you double deck your, your structure.
Yeah, just, you know, comments and observations, you know, I think we, we have a really good, uh, opportunity right now to use this from a golf facility to a family facility. So, it's not directed just at our golf community, um, it can be an asset to everyone who knows golf, who, who don't play golf. For me, it's really been about the bottom line, uh, my goal and my hope was that, uh, whenever changes we make, that it would be able to pay for itself, and I'm really happy to see that we do have some options, that, um, we kind of, that way, even if the revenue is, is optimistic, or, you know, just, you know, not, not very important, but we look at the options, um, even with option five, the most ex, one of the two most expensive options between four and five, in different scenarios, we're looking at, you know, a possible excess of 150,000 to 185,000 a year. So, even if the revenues are optimistic, there's a lot of wiggle room in there. I want the best thing for our people, our citizens' thought, um, I would not propose, from my standpoint, going out for a break and, and not affecting property taxes. We need to find a revenue source that does not affect the property taxes of our citizens' security. So, you know, for me, really, when it comes down to the bottom line, you know, I'm, I'm looking at, and I'm glad, I'm looking at option number five, um, in both of the finances scenarios, um, meaning the best expenditure of citizens' money at this point.
Any other questions?
I've got several, uh, we will talk this on Friday, and for some people, tonight is the first one we've seen. So, obviously, really, it's really some time to be able to analyze these numbers, what happened on, so several things. One, our request that we get a larger printout of all the numbers and stuff, and I would recommend we have it like we do with our budget, it comes out, page that folds out when we read it, because individuals are not going to be able to understand this, very simple. One question, one of the first questions I have, is that, and this was brought up on the seven meetings, and it was brought up twice, hugely, one of them brought up, and another individual, this is the city asked us, of that, how does this compare what's being proposed to other cities that have the snow, rain, and climate we have?
So, I'll, I'll take the snag off, for example, so snag off the two courses that, uh, that are going right now, that Staples built, the ones in Utah and one in Colorado. So, one of my questions is, okay, snag off, you gave me numbers of this, how much it cost to build it approximately, and this is how much it brought in the first year, and then one of them had two years of numbers. And first thing I asked is, well, where are they? Because one of the scenarios they brought up was probably, well, of course, that's in Arizona, we're not in Arizona, so I wanted to make sure that the numbers were good on that. So, um, for snag off, for example, you know, round, I'm throwing out around that this year, but four to 500,000 dollars, uh, three to 400,000 dollars to build it, and it was bringing, it was netting $55,000 a year, in the first two years that they had, they had done it on a $7 green fee, on something that families can use. So, for me, you know, it was $55,000 for, you know, to bring in on revenue, something cost $300,000, doesn't take, you know, much math to figure out, in six years, it's hard to pay for, just that one amenity. So, I started to look at different amenities, and making sure that they were in these climates that we are actually in also. Um, and then the golf revenue side, it's all the golf revenue that's on here, is our, it starts with our number, so I made sure, RJ, and I looked at that. Um, the very first number is our number, and it goes up from there, and it, and it does, it has in there, um, basically inflation, or, or raising fees, I think goes up, and that's something that RJ had talked about.
I know we're using 22,000, 230 rounds, I remember we went through this two years ago, what's the, there was a number that I didn't write down, what's the number of maximum rounds a course would take?
Maximum numbers?
I would say it was in the 3,000 range, something like that.
3,000 rounds? So, if that 22, we're at like 23,000 last year, 22.7 or something like that. I mean, maximum would be every single tee time is full, that doesn't happen anywhere, um, so.
What was it?
I can't do the math, I can't, I can't, I can't do the math right now. I mean, I, I think when, when Andy and I looked at it, when it was completely maxed out, if you were at, it just went 100% all the time, we're at like 60,000 rounds. That's, that's a complete.
Yeah, I was just remembering that there was before.
Would it be, uh, what are these safe asks, like if you're looking at this scenario, looking at 2039, is, could a course handle $29,000 rounds a year?
That's really, uh, that's really what we're looking at, because what I, also, what we don't have here is the numbers, what the course has done up to this point, of which you've assured us we're going to get, so I assume we're going to receive that any day now. Similar to what we had two years ago, where it showed a three-year, a five-year average, once we knew it. I think those numbers are critical, that we know what the course has been doing, and what are our expenses, and what are the revenues there. Because as we project forward, because in all honesty, we can put any number in here, extrapolate it, to show profit. Reality comes down to, if we're generating 22,230 rounds, how many rounds have we been averaging over the last, say, five years? And, because I know that we're growing, so we can pace that, because the study, we say we can do 44,000 rounds, do I have confidence in that number? If we've been doing 22,000, and it's taken us years to get up to that point, can we double that period of time? Because if it's not a realistic number, then we can't take the extrapolation of that additional items, and put a dollar amount to it, we can't really get that again. The other thing comes down to is that, it's like there's about five revenue sources. We've got golf course, we have product sales, you know, sort of there, driving range, and those things we already have hard numbers on. The unknown is PD golf, pickleball, some of those things there, which everything is speculative around that part, because there's not a lot happening. And that's the part that we have to be really careful. It's not difficult, I think, for any of us, anyone in this room, who can say, okay, if this is what we have in the range, if this is what we have in the course, and it's $600,000, and expenses are $500,000, we know that we're subsidizing $100,000, and that's okay. But to extrapolate that out by throwing other things in there that aren't true, for our, for our area, we have to take that into consideration.
And that's what really found safety in this, and, and then doing it around the country in different places, that's why, like I said, the snag off, that's one, I have, I had no idea how much it could bring in, how much you would even charge for something like that, that's why I had to have some. Um, so, they were the ones that have done it in different places, and so that's why they were the ones that came up with the numbers, because I have the, they have the history of.
Yeah, let's think of the, I'm sorry, on the 2020 numbers, on the night, the numbers going back, looking at the golf course actually did, and the history, we want to use. The 2020 numbers, the reason why, we can get this out of the Friday, so we want to be sure we had a fine tune in, in the projection, the cash flow. Do include, um, not including golf courses, the staff that Chris has, but also the court includes the staff that is out of the courts. So, when looking at those numbers, we are including our projection forward, although being able to take them in the course.
Right. Well, we, what we discussed now, in at least three of these meetings, and I'm bringing it up again now, is that what you, you gave us back two years ago. You took an average from 2000, 2013, 15, 16, 17, to show what the trend is there. The trend is important for us to see, because we show the councils, you know, we're not stagnating, we are actually growing revenue. And to be able to analyze how we're growing that revenue, because we extrapolate that as we go on through period of time. If not, we're just, we're just taking wild guesses. Now, numbers that they're showing here, is that their own numbers show that about 10% of any population utilizes golf course. We're the residents of 11,000 people, so we just use round figures, that's 11,000 people that are using that. What they've done in their analysis, I mean, it's pretty good, they're showing the area around us, what can be utilized, and I think those are pretty good numbers that we can, we can extrapolate out also. That percentage brings us up to, I think, 12% or something like that, we're actually about 8.6% on their figures, I believe. It's estimated 8.6% of the total population participation from, yeah, so we're about 8.6%. Using the surrounding area, I could bring it up to a higher number. That number, whatever it is, is 15 or 16%, it still comes down to the city of Liberty Lake, the residents who are going to pay for this, who are signing their name to this, is less than 10%. So, I want us to understand what we're asking our citizens to do. I am very comfortable with the trend of the golf course and the driving range, today is a no-brainer, we add more spots for the driving range, boom, boom, limited expense or something like that, immediate increase in revenue. Two years ago, when you sat here, we are now, we had this conversation, comment was, was brought up on the complications, well, what we can do is we can decrease revenue by charging more for ground developed, and also for driving range. What you told us was, if we do that, we're going to lose customers, because they'll go elsewhere. So, in this scenario, we're raising the cost, yet the two golf courses, they're in Liberty Lake, double proportion of ways, they're in Lakes, we will get to a point where we will lose that customer base. That's, that just kind of sense.
And at this point, right now, they're actually raising theirs faster than we're raising ours. So, that they're every, every year, every two years, especially in this last four years, when minimum wage has gone up, they've been the largest jumps for, for everybody, so they've actually gone faster than we have. So, uh, they're definitely not going to stay on a straight line, you know, as far as therapies, they're going to go.
I agree, yeah, let's hope, let's, let's hope they don't, because they're so, this, we as citizens of the county, we're subsidizing that also.
Right.
Can I add something, just because I think councilmember, this is for our number also, what's important, I think, isn't that we're just throwing numbers in to get an outcome of the bottom line. We're actually making assumptions, and so whether we. We're actually making assumptions, and so whether it's seasonal, geographic, the business, inflation, all of those things, as you said, councilmember Kennedy, all that goes in, maybe what we need to do is we need to identify all the assumptions that went into these numbers, because it's not an exact science. And I know that there's probably a range of income and, and expenses over the course of time. But I think it's important that these are, you know, the credibility of the numbers are important, and therefore, we need to know, you need to know, what assumptions remain to put those together.
Right. These, these assumptions are actually in, there's some, there's two pages in there.
Oh, which page are they on?
Some, right before the cash flow analysis. There's two pages that tell me that, like, a little bit of that. And the other thing, Mike, I want to point out that they actually go to utilization once, in that, in that higher scenarios, four and five, where the utilization goes up to the highest. I've read that, I've read that, and that's why I asked the question, because, because once again, we're banking on the utilization is going to go up. If we're doing twenty-two thousand rounds, whatever it is, and the maximum we could hit is thirty, whatever the number is, and we'll never get a hundred percent, it just doesn't work that way. Then we have to keep that in mind if we move along. Because we're looking at, I think they've roughly defined it for revenue sources, I think it's important we break down several of them, because I think this is about the one time, so like, I know it's injuries, the pickleball will generate this one, like, PD golf is this one, restaurants this one. It was sort of alluded to in the restaurants, that as the revenue goes up, we can be timed, we're not, we're not going to be in the restaurant business. And that's not in this scenario, just want to make that clear.
We don't want to be in the restaurant.
We don't want to be in the restaurant business, right? Is that if we're going to charge a percentage, and in this scenario, it's five percent, if you're about a million and a half dollars, about seventy-seven thousand dollars a year, seventy-five thousand dollars a year rent is five percent, so right now, we're getting four thousand, or we're, we're giving back five hundred, so we're getting about thirty-five hundred. So if we went to seventy-five thousand and kept that, that's pretty good, that's a better one we are. And then it was estimated to grow, if the restaurant did up to two million dollars, the rent would be, if it went to nine percent, it'd be a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, a good number, right? But we also have to look at, are those realistic numbers compared to the restaurants we're doing in the area now? And I'm, I'm assuming that we're, that we're comfortable with the confirmation, that those numbers are realistic numbers. Because the challenge with this, I, I agree with Chris, if this thing could break even, we got to hold ground, okay? We got to hold ground, if it doesn't break even, we have to subsidize a little bit, in my opinion, we still got to hold ground. Because right now, we're subsidizing based on numbers in two thousand seventeen, about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year, and I don't see anybody working on it. Really don't, it's a good asset. My concern would be, is that we should extrapolate it out, another favorite word to help extrapolate it out, to twenty years down the road, if it does not meet that. The revenue, the net profit, we're looking at, is so thin. Our scenario is, if it was any other business, big lot of businesses, they're going, what's going to happen, we, the citizens, are going to pay for that, surely. So I would really be very concerned. Concerned to me is, right now, I know, I want to know how much is being brought in on the average of the last five years, because I think it's easier for us that we move forward realistically, than actually be able to do it. But I think overall, this is great information, it's a lot of, of.
And I think that we can, we have an idea, I encourage you guys to really take a look at pages eighteen through twenty-two, because that breaks down a little bit. Well, that's twenty-year revenue projections for income, it gives you an idea of how much you can charge for each category. I mean, they, yes, they have Snag Golf in Arizona, or not Arizona, but they can say, okay, even if you do this six months out of the year, they can still give us some projections on what the possibility is. There's a lot of neat options within this that makes it more of a community-based facility rather than just golf. Uh, so before we continue, uh, there's no other questions from the council?
Cur- currently, where are the refund spending allocated to?
Just about everything you can think of.
Children's spoken for, I guess.
Well, so, two years ago, when we started Old True Park, the refunds were used for the cash, the part of general, like, cash flow bill, because that was a large project. And those monies are going to come back in to the city, um, so.
Is it rare?
I'm sorry, so those, those funds are coming back in the city. We have our capital facilities plan, so you, we do need to take a look at, prioritize what projects, but the refund is, at least from a cash, uh, cash payment balance, of using some of that money towards that. Those were the monies that's in the past, but I'm sorry, for the future, because they're existing, that's what I'm saying. So right now, REITs are averaging, I'll, I'll get, I'll, as well as the forecast from last five years for the golf course, I'll throw a REIT in there, because you run a lot of suggestion REIT, you want to see how it's performing. It's been coming in about anywhere from six hundred to eight hundred thousand dollars a year for the last three to four years, just because there's so much progress.
Should we currently have a long-term commitment that way?
Uh, correct, there's not long-term, in term, so if you're a debt finance, and you use REITs to pay back, and you're committing a portion of the REIT for that.
I would say there is, um, things you can use it for, you can't use it for, um, maintenance, you can, you can use it for capital improvements.
Right.
And projects.
Thank you.
I do have one question. On these estimated dollar bills, was the ten percent, well, which is included in those?
The ten, so, when you say ten percent?
Continuance.
Continuance, so then just all these expenses on those lineups, that is what the continuance is? The cash, um, cash flow statements and analysis, there's the last expense on there. Sorry, it's, it's in the executive summary.
The miscellaneous expenses, that's the page. Fourteen seventeen.
That's the one you can't read? Yes, the one you can't read. Well, in that case, works your way. Thank you. All right. So. I'm going to put my business down for a second. We have a lot of options before us, uh, options that could be very exciting for the community, to engage more people to utilize our facility. Such as Snag Golf, miniature course, we talked about even the pond slash ice rink. But if we're not, and we always talk about keeping an open mind to this entire thing, okay? Can you pull up option four? Can you go back to option four? So, uh, option four. Yeah, thank you. So. As we look at this, I'm going to try to, my best, so I'll see this. We know that our driving range is continuing to go up. How do we expand upon that? How do we draw more people into that driving range? We also know that our building cost is a big chunk of this cost to put in a new facility. We also know that we need a new facility, it's not meeting the needs that we currently have. So, when we look at this, I always try to think about, and you're going to see a pattern over the next six months. When I look at projects, I look at, how can we accomplish A, B, and C, all in one shot, in the least amount of dollars possible? Not driving up taxes, not driving up, uh, debt services. So, if I don't point this out for us to consider, I would be doing a disservice to everybody. So when we look at these options, I think about, how can we increase driving range revenue? How can we get a maximum facility? How can we provide all these amenities to the community? And do it at about half the price? So, we can, right, good luck with that one, how are we going to accomplish that? Keeping an open mind, okay? If I could provide an option to you guys, that would, the other cost that we have is advertising dollars, okay? So, my other goal, with what I'm going to present to you, is that this will help drop our advertising costs. So, if we were to do something like this, we would be the only facility within the region that would have something like this. But again, a lot of costs would come to all the, the building side of it. So if you look at the option of the two spots that could potentially be sold, I want you to picture. Just a thought, don't freak out, your business minded people are going to like the idea. You put in a high-end, five-star, four to five-star hotel. They put the building in, so picture an L-shaped hotel where those two great stories are. They're putting in the building, they're putting in the restaurant, they give us a little space for the pro shop, they're doing the advertising. It's going to drive your driving range use substantially, and it's drawing in options for them to get more heads in beds. They would, so you have a view with the restaurant, depending on what floor it is, and we would cap it out at how many stores it could be. But you get this high-end hotel, they're putting all the cost in, you do a long-term lease, so we've got constant revenue coming in to pay for the improvements to this golf course. So that's the other thing that I want to throw up to you guys to consider, because it is something that would help drop these costs down dramatically, and get us everything that we need to include in pro shop. So, that's another option to take into consideration. And I know that a very number of hotel organizations are going to be interested in a high-end hotel with, uh, organization. So after that, can you, oh, I think we're all similar. The reason I bring this up is because we've already had some groups approach us about this idea, and how valuable, how valuable it could be to make all this happen at about half the price. Okay? Any questions on that?
Dear Britten, did you want us to take the scenario that you just put together, and bring it back as a scenario number six?
Well, I think that the council would need to think it through, and, because it's, this is really a big undertaking for the entire community. And when we look at creating a walkable facility that has the Snag Golf, and for those of you, of you that aren't familiar with the Snag Golf, it's for younger kids that have already had to play golf, or families that want to go out and play golf, and they hit tennis balls like they would a normal golf course, it's, I think, six holes on that one, or nine. And they have smaller clubs, bigger heads, which is another revenue source that would come in. We also talked about the idea of a pond slash ice rink, that would be a potential revenue source in the winter months. And you see the pond, on that bottom side there, right under the vet lawn, it looks like. So with this hotel idea, we're meeting all those needs and drawing people to utilize the facility, which increases revenue substantially for the course. And any, as someone that has traveled most of their life for business, to be able to walk out of your hotel and have a driving range, even a, potential a double decker driving range, would be a serious, serious draw.
Pros and cons. Pro is that this idea is, we brought it in the past, and I really, I get that very fair. And why I continue to say that, is that if you look at the Corleye Hotel, if you look at a lot of them around, you've traveled to a lot of these places, and they're golf courses, and nice to them, and it's very attractive, you know? We're going to be on two weeks down in Palm Desert, and there's already six, five club houses I've already contacted, that I'm going to be meeting with out of curiosity, ones we, I've played with in the past. That, I, I think it has merit, the drawback maybe is that how long would it take to look into this? And does it delay all the things we've got going now? So that has to be taken into consideration. The other benefit would be, is that we did find somebody that had an interest in that, is that it would substantially lessen our liability for the citizens. And if I got voted in for one reason, it's to be accountable with the dollar. And this eight point nine, or two, three, I'm, I'm going to be accountable for, bring a dollar to the citizens, because they're going to be the ones who are on the hook for this. So if we can get an organization to come in and build something, and we can't get something along with it, the benefit in that is it takes away the liability, I call it, from the citizens. Because they're going to be so professional at this, they're going to make sure it's going to succeed. One of the things we've brought in the past is to get somebody to come in and take over the golf course. And that always fell by the wayside, because no one's building these golf courses now, to speak of, because they're not profitable. So I think it has great merit, the only drawback is, it concerns me, is the timeframe. Now, we could, we can get by with what we've got for a period of time. I started speaking five years ago, we could do something with this building, and that hasn't changed. My biggest concern is we don't lose any of that. But I, I, I do, I do think that has some possibility to, you know, Corleye is a huge draw, how many people go there? And see something like that, and think, you know what, I'd like to have, I'd like to be involved in something on a smaller scale. There's a good chance that we could be there, niche market for that.
When I talked to a number of businesses throughout this region, and we actually heard it when we had our, uh, facility discussions with breakout groups, to include one of our meetings with the business groups, and they have said, we like people in all the time for meetings, and oftentimes, they like, we like seeing golfing, or we like to go hit the driving range, but they end up going to Corleye Resort. This possibility would have them staying in our area, with these local businesses, not going into our. This is a huge opportunity for our community as a whole, uh, and creates a beautiful, like I said, nothing like it in the entire region that we have. But we have to continue to think of how we can accomplish as many goals as possible, in the most cost-effective way possible, and this is one of the ways to do that.
We talked to the state of Swat about this as a concept, that we're not, we don't want it to be, in other words, we want, we want it to be what they like, and we're not going to do that, and we'll never have enough distance. So by doing something like this, it makes it unique enough that people would look at it as a destination, so, um, you know, we talked to George G, they're, so, dying, that they're in a perfect place, you know? So imagine that they could come there, they could just, you know, they do the meeting for them too, and get some food, cater to them, I mean, it's, it's just perfect, nowhere like.
So, I love the idea, it's on, I love the idea, um, I appreciate you using the term long-term lease, I'm not, I'm selling, this is sort of a premier residence, I'm not selling off control. My big concern is I start thinking about a hotel, and I just don't have the energy and the medias and get a mutual dialogue going with whatever hotel group comes in, and, or whoever's going, how actually we really start talking details of how Vegas is feeling, or currently, it's like, is literally, are residents going to be okay if the hotel comes in and says, we need twelve stories? Uh, file us, because this is a goal in current culture, right? Yeah, I don't know, maybe, and if I started on with, that'd be that, they can, I just don't know, and I think that's, I think if we, you know, and propose that to our citizens, I think that they'd have some problems with it really.
Yeah, I would, and I would, I would never want to have something super high, uh, from that perspective, I mean, I always want to be comfortable.
Well, and, but not to the, we haven't gone down the path.
Well, and we haven't gone down the path far enough to be being cool, like, some building details look like. If I'm on the hotel side, I need, I need to take a taller, because I need more room, so I need more people. And three stories is the end, maybe, maybe not, I just don't know. So that's a big, big concern on how long the lease goes, what those terms look like. You know, some of the financials in here, you know, the finances work fine. I think we can just work and see if they can keep a rate of use cut and happy we can do that. Is it worth altering the level of service we're giving to our citizens? That's, that's my main concern. Like I said, you guys agree on two, there's a lot of momentum. That said, I continue to look at this as a fifty-plus year decision. So we can't get down to only six months while we continue to stay engaged and figure out if it's worth that six months, because it absolutely is. So, and I appreciate you bringing this option, idea up. I'm very interested in, in Kate, your question, I would be very interested in seeing how the finances actually work in that scenario. And I, in fact, I wouldn't want staff was, just, my thought being, I wouldn't want staff wasting a lot of time on that group actually coming things that, you know, we, we are interested with, we kind of, yes. Just have a look, you was out there going.
Traffic's another thing you have to handle.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of things. And there would be, there would have to be improvements for sure that we would require by the hotel to put in place. That also looks at other things that needs that we would have to have met as well. We've talked about needing either a roundabout or a traffic light at Mission and Country Vista. That would force by nature to have something there, and they would be able to pay, or we could work out an agreement that they would pay on the impact of that.
Who's actually, who actually wants to come talk to us, talk about what we're looking for?
I was just curious, I know we're running short on time and I don't see it on the agenda. Were we looking for some citizen comments tonight?
I was going to open it up to citizen comments next. I know we don't have anything slotted, but I think it's important for this topic specifically, we allow for some citizen comments.
Do you want to stand up and come to hear us?
Yeah, the mic.
And we may not have the answers before we can start taking the questions.
Yes, I would like you guys to keep that, I know we're... All this is very conceptual right now, so this would be really a discussion, I don't want anyone playing anything on anything.
Yes, thanks for the thought, Chris. Parking, could you identify yourself, sir? Yeah, Mark Thomas. Okay, so parking on these scenarios, what's changing as far as that? Or is it just, right now is the assumption it's staying the same?
So if you look at this diagram right here, this all becomes parking.
Okay.
All throughout here.
Okay, then one other, one other question I had, and that is clubhouse, square footage for the new clubhouse versus what it is today? What are we talking?
I think we're talking about double parking.
Is it forty-six hundred square feet?
Was that forty-six hundred square feet? Forty-six hundred square feet.
Currently forty-six?
That's the new one.
So right now, the building is thirty-six hundred, thirty-six hundred square feet up, thirty-six hundred square feet down.
Seventy-two.
And seventy-two hundred square feet on two stories. Is the new clubhouse more square foot?
Yeah, is that like twelve-two or?
It's considerable. And on the parking thing, I'm not sure, and I'm just going to throw this out because we're already in the conceptual change, stage. There was a concept that some of the parking would come down around the expanded Ford City Hall.
Thank you.
And if you took out this clubhouse spot here, and we moved it out, and it was here, with that hotel, that would be potential for more parking as well.
My name is Linda Kilker, and I can see the golf course around my house. I walk down by the golf course almost every day. When I bought there, I never thought there'd be a hotel that close, that's all I'm going to say. I mean, no, I would never be for a hotel there. Okay, those of us that, that's almost our back, I mean, I'm not right on the golf course. I can't see it's my backyard, but I'm like a house up on the hill on Tanglewood. No, I mean, I, I just, I, no hotel for me, thank you.
Linda and I share the same view.
Yeah, he's my neighbor. Well, your three houses suck.
Hi, I'm Stacy Sitten, I came when you guys were doing your concepts. I'm a mechanical engineer in the community. I love the ideas. My thought was disc golf for a revenue source. I was a little disappointed to see that it wasn't brought forth as a design concept in this, in this meeting. In my opinion, the snag and mini golf might be a little redundant as far as kids and revenue sources. I, that seems to be a common theme is revenue source. The disc golf, I personally played at Pondrosa Disc Golf Course in Corleye this weekend. We threw a disc golf tournament there, there was a hundred people. We had a hundred people buy lunch and beverages at Capone's. And this was February twenty-ninth. Revenue throughout the year, I think we're missing an opportunity here to have disc golf come in. Because again, all of these amenities to the course are seasonal. And I really, again, disc golf, Pondrosa's a nine-hole golf course, just like Trailhead. So I really think it should be considered as an option. I could see it all year, all year long. Not only that, disc golf is one of the fastest-growing sports in the world. It's very popular. Being on a ball馆course like, like it could be, charging green fees, doing it all year long with the food and beverage, would pull in the high-class disc golfers, you know, the ones that want to stay and have lunch and beverages. And again, just all year long. So I'm going to state it again, because I hope it gets in the next design turn when they're considering a hotel and everything, because I have two kids, my kids are young. I love them, I play disc golf with them, I play ball馆, pickleball, not interested. And again, snag and mini golf, I love children, I want them to be involved, but it's redundant. And so if we could bring another area, Orchard Park declined it. The Spokane County Park declined it, and we're missing an opportunity to bring it into the community. I'm going to state it again, hope to see it in the next design turn, thank you.
Any other citizen comments?
Well, I am very confident, I'm watching all this, there's one idea of revenue that I've seen on TV, because I'm retired, lost TV too much. But from your driving range, I haven't seen flying, you haven't provided some seating areas around it and target areas in it, and promoted within schools and everything, have it this target competition like they have on TV with awards there. It's something we haven't seen in this area, but it's on TV now, let's take a whole other place.
Thank you.
I just, I see you looking.
I'll touch aside actually, and it has a little bit of a problem, kind of like it's not built that thing, you've seen.
I'm Molly Arson, I live at the end of the driving range up on Tanglewood, and I am definitely not interested in setting a hotel off the back door of my house. I'm concerned about all these activities that are being moved over to where the existing driving range is, that are proposed, and what kind of noise, and how many people are going to be there? How late this is going around? Is it going to be, what kind of disturbance that will be for those of us who sit up on that ridge at the end of the existing driving range? And I'm also wondering what's happening to our golf course that I use all the time? What is it going to be like in the near future? Is it even more condensed than what it is currently, it appears to be? And it's going to be even shorter, more condensed driving range, or golf course than what it already is? And I use it all the time.
Depending on the option, it would, if you were to put in layer options that we discussed throughout, options, everything but one in pink, would turn it into a true par-three course.
Okay, so they don't give any show. So are we going to lose golfers, or just go somewhere else because of that? We're losing what we already have as a golf course.
There goes one more minute for comments.
Uh, Mark Nielsen. Just a comment there about the golf. I know I play a lot at Meadowwood and Liberty, and, you know, two, three, four times a week. I never play a Trailhead. You know, I, I don't play there because of the greens, I'd say, is the reason. The golf course, the quality of the greens, they look nice, and they're great for a lot of players, I'm sure. But as a golfer, they are not up to par with the normal golf course. And so if I were to play there, it would really mess my game up, right? It would, it is something I would have to adjust to, and then it would mess me up, so I'd play it. Now, when you say par-three, I've been in areas, Palm Desert, you mentioned other places where they've had par-three golf courses that were really nice. Nice green complexes, nice greens, have the quality that we have over here. And I would play that. I would be a revenue source, it's not currently paperizing the facility. And it would be a fun thing to do, because you can play it in this timeframe. But it has to have the qualities, the greens, so that real golfers don't see it as a, you know, a detriment to the game.
Thank you.
Yeah, that would be...
And you guys will have, we're going to have another citizen comment during our regular meetings, so if you get a chance to make a statement, you can do that in about fifteen, ten minutes. We're going to start our regular meeting, so.
Dear Reverend Father, we thank you for being with us this evening, we're talking about a lot of ideas. I think it's important for everybody to try to keep an open mind. A lot of the things we talk about, it won't probably more likely be feasible, but the important thing is we're talking, we're trying to look at every possibility and how the citizens of their life would pay for this. Ask the blessing of all our citizens.
The United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, you ready to start with the regular meeting?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you.
So motion would be, monitoring it, extracting out your presentation.
Second.
All in favor?
I don't like, no.
Okay. CEO, okay, transcript probably earlier, we're concerned ten minutes might not be suffice in the presentation. Seems like we have a cancellation of the, sort of, minimum requirement. Maybe we can give it the same extra five minutes, so that's...
Are they here?
For council's consideration.
So we're looking for Vista, excuse me, we're looking for, looking for their, the draft of their presentation.
Okay.
So that's fine, I mean, if we got some, some...
She lives close.
So we will proceed until she arrives. So we're at your first opportunity, citizen comments. I told you who would be right on this one, so if you didn't get a chance to speak earlier about Trailhead or any other comments you want to make regarding city business, this is your opportunity to do so.
Should a yellow card be added? Come, come forward, the logo did a yellow card down after he answered.
Um, I'm Kupriani, and I live at the Mission Side, this is the right name, I play. But, um, I just wanted to inform the council about our event Never Start Ever End on June thirteenth, at Hilltop Park, we're doing a spikeball tournament. So I don't know if you know what spikeball is, but like a mixture of foursquare volleyball. It's a growing sport, and it's really big in the high schools. Like, I'm the president of a spikeball championship at the high school, so I have good input in creating the tournament. And so we just wanted to let the citizens and council know of our, our event that's coming up. It's going to be really fun, so.
When is it, when is the event?
June thirteenth. So it's the day after high school graduates, or the graduation.
What time?
Uh, we're starting at eleven o'clock.
At TV?
Uh, it's going to be at Hilltop Park.
Hilltop Park, oh, okay, cool. Okay.
Any questions?
Not before to see you.
Thank you. Setting. Any other citizen comments? Yes?
This is some comments for me to record. This is from Christie Zepplata. She says, dear Shane and council members, I just want to express my support and ideas for revamping a Trailhead clubhouse. I was sorry to hear of the low turnout from the community regarding discussions with the poker views for Trailhead golf course. My job takes me out of town frequently, so I did not attend any of the meetings. I try to stay informed about community events, livelihood, and I'm sorry to have to have much more to present on the living site community page. Has anyone ever thought of submitting community comments via social media? Where are assigned, these times are changing, and you do not have the luxury of presenting to ten citizens that may have valuable equipment created ideas for improving our great city. Perhaps you could create your own Facebook site and never say it's wrong, you'll have a sign at the corner of Country Vista and Liberty Road. There are so many great ways to connect with people electronically, and this could be a great asset for communicating with city residents. Trailhead golf course, in my opinion, is the jewel of Liberty Lake, and it has the possibility, and it, excuse me, it has possibly the very best view our city has to offer, and the fact that it is accessible to everyone in our community makes it priceless. I firmly hope that the final design will make this facility that can be enjoyed by every resident and visitor to Liberty Lake, whether or not they golf, while at the same time being a source of revenue for our city. I can see this goal being met by creating and inviting restaurants and bar with a large deck to enjoy the suite of menus. Include an improved community space that can have multiple uses for after-school activities, midday meeting space, and weekend and night day events, things weddings, Christmas parties, fundraising events. If the clubhouse was rebuilt or designed in multi-story, it could house an area for housing ball carts and maintenance equipment underground, a large banquet facility on the ground floor with a lockout covered patio, which also functions as a deck for the upper-level restaurants. To expand parking, perhaps the current lot could be excavated to also provide additional sun-turing parking. Hopefully, my ideas are not, you know, have been discussed already. The inclusion of an ice skating rink, water cart, and mini golf course sound fun, but expensive, and I suspect would not gravitate enough, generate enough revenue to cover the costs. I am wondering, where are you applying additional room to build them? Anyway, I just want to express my delight and interest in improving Trailhead. I will try to attend upcoming meetings and watch for each of your progress in making Trailhead the best city.
Any other citizen comments? We will move forward. So we'll continue on with the city board and commission reports. Water District.
Mayor, Council, Villaguardia, Commissioner of the Service District, Lake Forest Service District. Okay, well, not too much is going on. We have our annual, or our board meeting is next Monday, so it's four o'clock at the, on the office. A couple of things on the agenda, we are... A couple of things on the agenda, we are about to, uh, sign an agreement with the School of Environmental Water Quality Laboratory in Washington, D.C. So what that is, is that these kids come and do, um, their doctorate for Liberty Lake, so. They'll do water quality, they'll do sampling, they just do a lot of stuff, it doesn't cost very much, it's a great job, so. We look forward to seeing them again, and at the end of their investigation, they'll give us report. Um, we're gonna approve the plan spec, and specifications for the East Side Water Improvement Project Phase Two. That, uh, will go on Neeland on, uh, East Side of the lake. So that project's moving along. We're also gonna approve plan specs for a booster station improvement project on the Green Ridge Water System. That's if you, uh, we're providing just water on the, on the East Ridge building. And that's about it, any questions?
Sure. So a quick comment, thanks again to Vijay for addressing the concerns for the River District with the, um, annexation sign went up for the sewer over there. So there are concerns on Facebook, he jumped right in and threw it up.
Good. Well, that's on the agenda too for, uh, the Seachannel Products.
Question.
Sure.
When is the Green Ridge Water, uh, start?
The Green Ridge Water?
The Green Ridge Water, okay.
Oh, uh, we're just approving the plans and specs now, so. It's just, uh, that's the booster station. It will start, uh, probably three weeks, spring.
I think you're pretty contract minded.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question.
Hello, um, latest shoots to this in person, that's mission. We have a lot of projects going on right now, um, first one is our Pavilion Park Theater. Uh, the artist shared, um, some of his artwork to us, he's finishing it up, it looks wonderful. Um, he's looking at being done at the end of April and we are looking at, um, a May installation and unveiling. We're getting a rough cost for a viewpoint plaque to kind of give the history of the carousel and the project. And we looked into augmented reality with gravity jack, it's really, really expensive and I just don't think we could find enough uses to justify the cost of it, honestly. We have to, gosh, it's a lot, so, no. Also, we have winter glow, um, we were hoping to move forward with the winter glow, um, for next year and that invoice will be, um, on the mark study, the council meeting will be guys' review and approval. Um, we have our Orchard Park Story Walk, um, Spokane Valley Tech is currently working on the prototypes for those. It'll be twenty stands, just like it is at Rocky Hill. Um, they are making a few tweaks, just, I think, dabbling with plate thickness and, I don't know, really technical things. Um, but other than that, I think it cost him down a little bit. Um, Kwanis has generously, generously donated fifteen hundred dollars towards the project and we'll be looking at possibly getting another sponsor to cover the rest of it, um, should it cost roughly about four thousand dollars? Um, we're targeting completion of the twenty stands by the end of May and we're also looking at doing, um, an unveiling as well. Um, I contacted, um, local author Susan Nip, she does all of the Mudgee and Millie books in Correlane and she's interested in collaborating with us, she's really excited about our project, it kind of goes along with what they do in Correlane. Um, and so she's willing to donate all of her books to the project, to us to put in the stands as we want and potentially come to an unveiling, so.
That's great.
Yeah, she's wonderful, all the proceeds from those books go to the Correlane Library Foundation, she doesn't get any profits at all, so. Um, that's in utility box, that's our last box that we have currently, um. We are just getting started on artwork for that, just so we can get ahead of the game. So we are looking at having South Park Middle School students do artwork for that. Um, they are going to open up a session before school where students that are interested can collaborate together and they're gonna come up with a collaborative submission for the utility box. Um, they are looking at having artwork to us maybe after spring break. Um, and we're excited to see what they come up with, some ideas that right off the bat, the art teacher had was, you know, pop art is very big with that group and it's kind of artwork we have at C N in our city or, I don't know, we'll see what these young people come up with, I guess. Um, and then we'll look for mayor. Questions?
Any questions?
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other committees? We have ST here?
We do, we do.
We're ready for you.
We drove the speed limit all the way. And still we're late, I'm sorry about retarding us in arriving. My name is Susan Meyer and I'm the CEO at Spokane Transit. And we are pleased to be your transit provider. We're here to talk to you tonight about opportunities to improve transit in the greater Spokane Valley area, including Liberty Lake. Ridership is up on the routes that serve Liberty Lake and Carl Ottersstrom, who is our Director of Planning and Development, is going to give you the detail. I will tell you ahead of time, it is content rich. And Deputy Mayor Kennedy has seen this as a member of our board, thank you for your leadership. We will be happy to do any briefings with any organizations that are interested in learning more or with any of the, uh, council members or the staff. So if somebody will give us the high sign when it's time for us to wrap up, we will, we find this fascinating. So we would talk a bit longer if you hold on. This is Carl Ottersstrom.
Thank you, Susan, and thank you members of the city council and Mr. Mayor for allowing us to present today. So I'm gonna go over these slides which are concerning the preliminary proposal for service provisions across the region, but specifically associated with Liberty Lake. As Susan said, ridership is up in Liberty Lake, uh, the three routes serve in the area, having combined ridership growth of six percent total uh, and five percent on average, uh, in terms of the individual routes. So, uh, why is ST looking to change service? Two things, one, we actually have proposed a planned service improvements as part of ST moving forward, uh, which is our ten-year plan for more better transit service. Uh, in two thousand sixteen, area voters approved the sales tax increase to provide more better transit service predicated on the ST moving forward plan. We also continue to, to, uh, find efficiencies and improvements in the system based on community feedback that we, uh, continue to receive and the development, development of the region. So how do we develop a plan for the best service? We actually go through a multi-phase planning process and part of that process is, is developing a draft recommendation, we're in the process of doing that now. And that's developed on stakeholder feedback, planning principles and policies both board adopted and things, principles that are just how transit works, and then professional analysis. And stakeholder feedback includes online surveys, uh, community leads and presentations. Uh, it includes targeted outreach to customers and certain populations. Professional analysis, sometimes there's great ideas for changing around, but it can't actually make the, the bus can't make that right-hand turn, it's too tight. Or there's a, uh, low segment that's gravel and, and you can't picture a bus on gravel every day. So there's lots of things you have to analyze, how long does it take to do that route and is there sufficient recovery time? And then our, in addition to the principles are how transit works, we have a comprehensive plan at STA that identifies policies and objectives for the STA to consider and, and maintain. For instance, one of our, our goals is to serve eighty percent of, of population within a half mile where they live with bus service. And so that's something we look to do as we revise service. So the planning process, this is maybe a little hard to say to the back, but what we're doing, uh, for these changes is a multi-step process, we actually began this last year, inventory, uh, inventory goals and opportunities with our riders, with our employees. With an online survey, we just finished another online survey about preliminary proposal, which looks at specific options for changing service. And then a draft recommendation and we're, we actually said, this is what we hope to do, this is the real deal, but we still are taking feedback and, and we bring that to the STA board for their guidance and also public hearing for people to, to provide feedback. And then a final recommendations created, uh, before we take that for board action. And then the implementation, in this case, is over two years, twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, and, and we often do these, uh, changes with less time in between the, the, the action by the board and implementation, because we're talking about so many changes uh, and, uh, that we need more time for implementing. And I failed to mention, one of the big advances in the STA moving forward plan, that's size twenty twenty-two, is the city line, which will open for service in May of twenty twenty-two. And that changes, there's a chain of, uh, changes within the city of Spokane that are unleashed because of that project. Uh, opportunities for new service elsewhere, new connections, uh, and so that's why that date is really important to us. So the areas of focus, northeast Spokane, the Airway Heights, the things connected to that include the Air Force Base and, uh, the airport. And then we call Greater Spokane Valley, Millwood, Liberty Lake, and the city of Spokane Valley. So I'm gonna focus on, uh, I'll go the height, a little picture on Spokane Valley and then, uh, speak to the routes that touch Liberty Lake. And so we're looking to improve service effectiveness in the valley and address longstanding requests for, or issues and opportunities in the valley, including Liberty Lake, and Liberty Lake includes the Red Bull High School that's under construction. And then the developments occurring along Country Vista, uh, including the apartments will get down. And then, uh, longstanding requests for a seven-day-a-week service to the Meadowwood Technology Park, which has significantly more jobs than it would before. So this is a, uh, high test of the map, I'm gonna, we'll get some more specific maps, uh. So those who are very familiar with this, uh, network out there will know exactly what changed, uh, but for those who haven't, the big changes in the valley, in Greater Spokane Valley, uh, we'll focus on just outside the city of Liberty Lake first is we're proposing to connect Ardon Road Service through Millwood north to Upper Drive and then west through North Spokane, so create a new North Spokane to the valley connection. We're proposing to connect Spokane Valley directly, uh, in the Miraboo Park area directly to Liberty Lake via Mission, Indiana, which today is indirect, uh, along Sprague and then, uh, roughly travels onto Barker of the Mission and drops back down to Liberty Lake. Proposing to, uh, eliminate, uh, ninety-five inside the city of Spokane Valley, uh, because of, uh, lower performance than, uh, our metrics, our benchmarks for perform, performance. And, uh, we advise routes in that area to, to make up for that loss. So specific to Spokane Valley, uh, Route seventy-two, so, so today we have a Route seventy-four that travels from Liberty Lake to downtown Spokane and it serves the Miraboo Park and Ride. It doesn't operate on weekends, uh, and what we're proposing, instead of having that route on the freeway in competition with the Route seventy-two express to Liberty Lake, we have an all-day route, Route seventy-two, serving, uh, the north side of the freeway, from Miraboo Park and Ride along Indiana to Mission and then dropping south to Liberty Lake Park and Ride and then continuing east of Liberty Lake Park and Ride. Again, that's an area that doesn't have service today, uh, on nights, uh, and other weekends particularly. And terminating at the Meadowwood Technology Park, we partnered with Greenstone, uh, to have bus service, uh, into the facility there on Mission Avenue. And so this route would run seven days a week, uh, and during weekdays, it would, it would continue as a Route seventy-one all the way to downtown Spokane. And that would be express once you get to Miraboo Park and Ride. Then the Route ninety-eight, which today kind of bounces between either side of the freeway, would be allowed to stay on the south side of the freeway rather than try to be low Sprague, admission, Big South on Sprague Avenue, then continue east along, uh, Appleway and then Country Vista Boulevard to the Liberty Lake Park and Ride. And what that does is provide, introduce new service in Spokane Valley and Liberty Lake, east of Barker Road and, uh, including in front of the new Red Bull High School. So we're working with their staff to make sure that, uh, bus stop improvements can be made, to have accessible bus stops. Time for this project, especially with the new high school construction, to get that, uh, be incorporated into the site plan. And, uh, so those are the main, uh, improvements. One I failed to put in the slide deck, I apologize, there is a Route one seventy-four, uh, as Susan said, there's a lot of bitty gritty details. Route one seventy-four would be an express route for people who work in, uh, Liberty Lake and Meadowwood Technology Park, coming from downtown that would not, would go non-stop all the way to Liberty Lake, really focused on commuters going to Liberty Lake. We would also beef up Route one seventy-two going to Spokane, so commuters in the opposite direction. So we serve both those commuter markets with non-stop service and then also have better all-day service, introducing a second all-day two-way route, um, from connecting Liberty, uh, Liberty Lake and Spokane Valley. So one would be on, from the north side of the freeway, one would stay on the south side, the route on the north side of the seventy-two would also serve Liberty Lake Park and Ride and the Meadowwood Technology Park. Uh, so those are, uh, the big changes. Now, as we have developed this plan back in two thousand fourteen and fifteen, it was not just a fixed route plan, bus plan, it was also a public transportation plan, so all the modes of STA. And a, a big component of our service is the paratransit service we provide for persons whose disability prevents them providing regular fixed route bus service, and that could be physical, uh, mobility challenges or cognitive disabilities, uh, that, they can't ride the bus without somebody who's, who's making sure they get door to door to their, from their origin to destination. And so these changes as proposed would expand the paratransit boundaries. The paratransit boundary is that service area where your origin and destination must be inside that boundary to have your trip qualify for service and is anywhere within three-quarters of a mile on the fixed, that is a scheduled bus route. And so the red, uh, area, the red line in this represents the current paratransit boundary. The green lines in it represent existing routes, so that's a buffer around that. Now you'll see some places, uh, in, um, that those two lines get a little closer, that's because there are, there's a STA corporate boundary, uh, aligns up with some of the city boundaries and so it doesn't go past our STA, uh, boundaries. Uh, but, uh, where our boundaries have more root and grow, uh, you'll see, uh, some of it is in Liberty Lake on the south side of the freeway, uh, and, and then north, north of Millwood and then north of Spokane Valley, just kind of northeast of Millwood. There's a new paratransit service area, which are outlining the area basically between the blue lines and the red lines in this map. So I'm happy to pause for any questions on the service, uh, changes that are proposed. As I move on to the next steps, um, so we have other additional stakeholder meetings scheduled, uh, outreach with different groups. We, uh, like I said, part of this exercise is not only does it look good on the map, but can we actually drive that route and make, make the schedule based on the, the, the time points that are necessary in the connections? Uh, and, uh, all that would develop and, and prepare, prepare a draft recommendation. Part of that draft recommendation is what is called Title Six Analysis, an equity analysis, where we have to determine and ensure that, um, we are treating places that high, have a higher, uh, po, higher percentage of minority population and even low-income populations, sure that those areas are not disproportionately negatively impacted, that is, if we were taking service out of lower-income areas of, of the region and bringing them to higher-income areas, that's a concern, uh, from the federal government's perspective, because they're providing service, uh, funding for grants that will not be STA and, uh, there's requirements to meet the Civil Rights Act and several different executive orders related to environmental justice and, uh, civil rights and ensuring that government, federal government, resources are, are being used to, to not, uh, worsen economic devices. So that's part of our, uh, our draft recommendation. We'll also do a follow-up survey as part of that recommendation, have a public hearing. And then our, our board will give us guidance and, and we'll refine that, uh, for a final recommendation and board action will be scheduled for our program. So at this present state, we are looking to make the improvements and changes in Greater Spokane Valley in twenty twenty-one in the May timeline, and then the rest of the changes in North Spokane and, and Airway Heights in twenty twenty-two concurrent with the central city, with the city line. the central city line or grand opening. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about anything about Liberty.
Just, Carl, you know that there's been questions from our council regarding paratransit service to Hawkstone. So as we speak, is there service now? And if not, when?
There is.
There is now.
Yeah, it's like September last year.
The news is everybody in Liberty Lake has access to paratransit within the city limits.
So we're going to go back to this map.
I was trying, I was trying to follow.
Yeah, same. That falls off. There is a little corner, I believe. I can't guarantee that just based on the map. I think the map.
Once you get back to me, I'll share. But the question we would have is, is there residents of Liberty Lake that don't have access to paratransit?
I believe there are because if you see closer to the lake, obviously the lake's not in the city boundaries, but there's a gap between the county boundary and the city boundary where that red line extends today. And so it's mostly single family housing. So there hasn't been high demand or desire, request for paratransit in those areas. I'll have you just to note that the Eagle Ridge area, which is a kind of comparable, I don't know, four, five thousand people, outside of Millwood, has no STA services in terms of fixed route. And only some of the areas have paratransit.
Just so we know, I'm not trying to put you out of the spot because I know there's policies and the like. Maybe this map with a city, I guess some streets on it, like a Sprague Avenue or something, so I can orientate on the other side. Because periodically we do get phone calls. It'd be nice if you could send me yesterday.
Thank you. That's a good help. And you know, it's something to always consider as we think about the growth plan and working together to ensure that the two of our instinct really appreciate that growing over time and making sure as the city grows, we're able to support that. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll drop right back into where we were at with our meeting. The mayor and council reports. Anything on the council?
I'd make a quick shout out to the Paul the Dollar Band, scheduled for this coming Saturday, the River Park himself. Doors open at six. Please come. I'm sure it's going to be a great time for a party.
Many games over the last couple of weeks, but one thing I really was pleased I was able to attend is Chuk school pride went to a summer middle school career day. And it was actually a lot of fun. I got a textbook, I'm gonna show up and maybe half hour of work by midday. I spent the entire time there. The kids are, they have about eighteen different booths that were set, everything between the FBI to the police department was there, to public companies that trades, sheeting, welding, electrical, and things that sort of there. And it was really great to watch these kids move from station to station. They had a series of questions that the teachers asked them to ask. And it was really interesting to see some of these come forward. And it really takes serious what they were doing. I was there in the police department, but I have to say, I was so far down on the beck and order that no one was interested in what I was doing. There was two kids came up while there was three policemen there asking, being asked questions. And they said, now what do you do? Are you with the police department? And I says, well, I'm not. And this little guy says, okay, we don't want to talk to you right now. The other thing that happened, I swear the police officer said, this had to be a setup. Two of the young kids came to me and said, we've got a question. What is your opinion on the flashing beak lights? And the police officer looked at me and said, hold on, this has got to be a setup. All the people should have gone to go to school. But the bottom line was this, I'm glad that I was asked to go. Like it would have been great if some of the council member had the time to go. It's just great to see these kids and realize, you know, the future I think is pretty good and wonderful. Thank you.
One of the things that we're hearing more and more about are the younger population students not getting into the trades, whether it be construction, engineering, we name it. Even on the policy, there's a little big concern from the medical side of it, but kids not going to school to become doctors and practitioners, practitioners assistants. And one of the ideas that was brought to the table on that, bring to the front, Stephen, with our city crew, he had this great idea, which I brought to Ben Small, which was how do we fuel that fire for our younger kids to get into the trades of all facets? And so Stephen's idea was to work with the school district to have the kids, sophomores on up, kind of, and I've talked about mentoring within our city, within staff, but this would be almost like a mentorship for the youth. So they can learn multiple facets. Take deicing, for example. They get to see what some of our crews do or working in the parks. Not only what they do day in, day out, but the science behind fertilizers and deicing and the math to calculate how much to utilize. So there's a lot of different things that can be taught to these kids. And I approached Ben Small this idea and he absolutely loved it. And so we're going to be partnering up. They already partner up with one of the universities for the medical piece, but they haven't had a good partnership. And we're going to be one of the few cities in the areas that provides something like that, a good collaboration with another entity. So thank you, Stephen, for the great idea. If you guys recall, at our last city council meeting, I asked you to take into consideration Spokane Valley's request for us to support their freight mobility project. And there was some information that I sent to you guys. I don't know if you had a chance to work that over, but if you guys have, I want to get your guys' input or any concerns of us supporting Spokane Valley on their freight mobility projects.
Mr. Mayor, I'd actually ask a resolution you prepared in support of that freight delivery, first you consider.
Okay. All in favor?
And I oppose.
Thank you. Okay. We will work on that. We had some, as Councilor Kennedy talked about, we've had some great meetings since our last council meeting, one of which was a meeting with multiple entities from business to cities alike, GSI Health put on. And it was a discussion of collaboration. Oftentimes, even two cities can be working toward the same objective, but they're pulling on opposite ends of the rope because we don't communicate effectively with each other. We don't have that good collaboration that we desperately need. And so part of this discussion was to figure out how we can resolve that. And we started working with multiple entities within our city and have representation, not just on the city side, but the business side, because oftentimes we hear of lack of voice when it comes to a Lepian getting funding for projects. So we're going to go for grants for different projects. And it was a pretty well received message that we needed to get better collaboration amongst all the entities involved in what we do day in, day out. So I was happy to hear about that. Any other reports? Okay. We'll move on to the city minister report.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, city council, just a quick update on a whole host of things. So the coronavirus, we all know, is around. There's a lot of information. Department of Health, APWA, AWC, ICMA, all these agencies are sending us a lot of information. And I thought Chief Collins did a really good job in summarizing his report. So I'm going to recite just the very abbreviated recommendations. If you're sick, stay home, wash your hands. And if you sneeze or cough, cover up your sneeze, if you will, in your sleep or use a tissue. And then the other thing that he mentioned in his report is that if you are sick, call your provider. Don't visit emergency rooms or doctor's offices when you pass the virus. Your doctor will give you further instructions and determine if you need testing. So what I want to let you know is that we are agenda, we've done an excellent job. We have disinfecting things all over city hall, the library, the police department. We have kept our employees, I think, up to date, best practices. The mask, as we all know, as we're learning, is nominated unless you're sick. So we're just trying to be very proactive. In the event that it starts affecting our employees directly or our ability to deliver service, certainly we're going to have an immediate meeting and address essential services in the law. But right now, we're just doing our best to stay current. We all know it's changing a lot. I sent you, I think it was AWC's webinar tomorrow. Feel free to look at that if you want. But we're trying, there's so much information out there, we don't want to overload our employees with it. So I'll move on. City retreat. The retreat is scheduled for April 19th, I believe. That's a Sunday. So we had three questions because we need to start getting ready for it. It's only five or six weeks away. Mayor, if you can debate if you want, but the facilitators, one question that came up, do we want a facilitator to help us go through the agenda and facilitate the conversations? We don't have a facilitator in mind. It's just, is there a desire? Do you have a facilitated retreat?
This is your guys' retreat. It's up to you.
What's on the agenda?
Well, that's the other piece is I brought up at the last council meeting to make sure we get your guys' ideas of what you'd like to discuss during the retreat. So you guys are, we have some certain topics that we're eventually going to discuss, but this is your guys' retreat. So it's my way up to you guys on what things you want to add to this.
Is there a tentative agenda? Do you already have some things submitted, I assume?
I haven't. But let me tell you where I'm kind of collecting things that I receive. So one is kind of a meet and greet amongst yourselves is who are you? What's your background? What are your priorities? That doesn't have to take a lot of time, but kind of getting to know each other. That's part one. Part two could be revisiting our strategic plan. It's on the wall. Is it current? Do you want updated? Any changes that you want to make? Number three would be priorities. Are there priorities that you want us to be aware of? Do you want to discuss amongst yourself what your priorities are? Another thing that Mayor brought up is our logo. Over the course of time, our logo has come up as, you know, maybe we need to revisit the logo and update it a little bit, do something different. That's just off the top of my head. Those are four or five things, but certainly it's your retreat so we can make modifications. So why don't I do this? Why don't I bring a draft agenda to our next meeting on March 17th? And we can discuss the content and also the facilitation piece. That might be getting a little tight schedule of facilitators, but my sense is you're not all overly excited about a facilitator.
I did evolve several of the facilitators. Mayor and I went to a meeting last week, we were talking, gave a little report on economic development. There was a facilitator there. And without that facilitator, with that group of individuals, would have been a disaster. She was so good, kept the focus moving because there's nothing but moving shakers in that room. So it really has an advantage. For me, I would be in favor of facilitator, but only if the council gets plenty of time in advance to see what are everything that was covered, or what are the priorities there. When we have done this in the past, that's how it was done. The council determined how many individuals were there. It happened to be like nine. Each council member gave input to the facilitator and said, okay, here's my three top things. And that was how the meeting went. And every topic was covered. So there is a benefit to that.
I'll give you some examples of some of the things that we might consider for discussion. One of them being our existing facilities that we have, the rest of the 6.4 acres, what do we want to do with it? The 22 acres that we have, what do we want to do with that? One of the things that we need to look at very heavily is, what Spokane has taken a look at is, all right, now that we have some ideas of defining where pedestrian crossings go, let's set up a strategic plan for, not only for lock-in and in, but for budget increases. So we can start identifying two, three, four years out, which facilities are going to need those pedestrian crossings. So these are some of the topics that we look forward to talking about. But it's really important that you guys give us your input about topics that you want to know during this. So make sure and get those to Katie as soon as possible.
So we'll come back to all those two things. So next question that we had is the timing. I think originally we thought 2:00 to 6:00. And now we're not sure if that's really enough time. So kind of what we're, I don't know, we just want to feedback, is 12:00 to 6:00 the right time? Would you rather do it earlier or later? I wasn't sure.
And this is really from the perspective of advertising that we're having a meeting and how long it's going to be. If we go shorter, we go shorter. But what we don't want to do is say we're only going to go three hours and we're giving great conversation and have to cut ourselves off completely.
I think we were starting earlier in the day and having more time, nine o'clock, whatever, versus, you know, 12:00 to 6:00. And then you're kind of pushing it to people's, this is on a Sunday.
Sunday.
Especially because it was getting ready for work the next day and it all got to you.
And we're planning for going to church on Sunday at nine o'clock or more.
And I think that's why we kind of pushed it earlier to noon.
Was it 12:00 to 5:00 or 12:00 to 4:00? Does it have to be something like?
That was the date we locked in at the last.
We do have a council member that this app is on Saturday. So can you guys run a good Sunday? We had him on Sunday. It's in the past.
It's really trying to find some good amount of time where we're not rushed. So we felt that near that 12:00 to 5:00 range would give us a good amount of time.
We have 11:00 to 6:00 and then we're up at 4:00. So we're a little late.
I'll be a little late.
About 3:00.
12:13, I'm like.
Yeah, it's 12:00.
Yeah, 12:04. So let me say 12:00 to 6:00. And then do you have before 6:00? Okay. So we probably start, we'll have a light lunch. And finally, the facility.
Shouldn't the dates sort of be on there?
It's April 19th. It's a Sunday. Okay. And then on the facility, so Trailhead has a reservation on this day. It probably could be moved if it had to be. City Hall is open. And then also, the idea came up, and I haven't reached out to the portal, but they have a conference room on the second floor as we walk in the entryway. And so those are, that's an idea. I haven't looked into that.
I can ask Keith Morrow. I know that Baptist Church has services there on Sunday at 4:00 or 5:00. You can use that room. But I don't want to carry them all at the same time there. So I can ask Keith, if you try not to do the cost associated with the building.
Okay. So yeah, if that's, if that works out, then that's an option.
We have.
Underground is all.
Oh, yeah, right.
Yeah, perfect.
So is there a preference on the location?
Anywhere but here.
Anywhere but City Hall.
Yeah, I think we need, okay.
Okay, so we'll go up with the water district. Is it portal?
Yes.
Okay. The next looks ominous, but I'm going to go really fast. We've been tracking a lot of information and I just want to give you kind of closure to that subject. National Little League Tournament is a no-go. There's logistical challenges. Our facility didn't work for them. Winter flow, as was mentioned earlier, it is, we would like to put on the agenda for March 17th. It's the $10,000 contribution to them for their 2020 event. So Jen has more information, but right now that's something that we wanted the council to be on board, aware of, that it's in our budget and we're planning to do it. Any comments or concerns?
So the idea is put on the agenda for March 17th?
Correct.
For discussion?
Yeah. And then real quick, Appleway Undergrounding by Vista is starting back up. And when Carl mentioned that there was a lot of ridership out to the Meadow Wood Tech, you know, that's a growing facility as far as jobs go. And this undergrounding by this to support some of that energy that they need in that area of town. So it's a project they're doing at their expense. Grammar Road rate restrictions, weight restrictions are being lifted this week. RJ's working on the personnel manual. I told you earlier that we have it down probably in April, looking, a little bit March or April, probably looking like April or May. And what we will do is we will complete our personnel manual, get some input from our employees, and then bring it back to council before we adopt it. And we'll edit it so that you can see the changes in what the manual currently reads. It's been a long time. We have a lot of housekeeping things to change just because of flaws and, you know, HR things that have changed in our state. Okay, the AP for our city council meetings. And I wanted to give you some information. Okay, the AP for our city council meetings, and I wanted to give you some information that Anita has been working on. So we wanted to provide council with an umbrella of all the costs associated with this AP. It doesn't include any of the monitors or things that we've done in the past. It's only going forward. It also doesn't include any modifications to the building. But, and everything that we're proposing is transferable. So if we buy it, it can be used in a different location. It's not devices that lose their ability to work if we aren't here, something like that. So I wanted to let you know it's, it's data and operations that we can use in a lot of different locations. So what's happening as we buy the bits and pieces for this, it's coming to thirty-six thousand dollars. Thirty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents. The reason why we wanted to bring it to council as a package and umbrella is because all of the procurements are individual and very few of them trigger the five thousand dollars. So Granicus is the biggest chunk, twenty-seven thousand dollars, twenty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars. And this is all the software and the subscription fee and all of the things associated with the program that Aunt Jews and Anita would use to run the program. Then we have a consultant who is priceless, I will say, for five hundred dollars. We have some other things that we need to add. So all told, it's thirty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars. So what we want you guys to think about is approving this or not. It is time sensitive. We've been doing it, Anita's been doing it this way for months now, and the quality is marginal. And if we wanna increase the quality, we need to make that.
Real quick, this is your extension on policy manual, or personnel policies. I talked about mentorship program and we had discussions about the mentorship program internally for staff who want to move up in their potential careers, whether it be within their own departments or aspirations for other departments. And we're, now that we have the idea that kinda locked in, we're finalizing the details of how it's gonna look. And we already had a number of staff that has shown a great interest. So we'll be moving forward with the deeper details.
Yeah, we have a staff meeting on March eleventh and we'll be rolling that around forties and creating a culture of mentorship and support in our organizations.
Oh, question on the AP. Now, we already have that in our budget, thirty-six thousand, four hundred.
Thirty, it's for thirty thousand.
Sorry, the capital city plan I wanna say was like thirty-one and thirty-two thousand. So we're about four thousand dollars shy. So we may have to look at another line item potentially in the budget, if I have it in the budget, that we've not spent for this year.
My thought is this, after Katie and I visited on Friday, you made a very good point. Because some of this comes in piece deal, it's gonna be, maybe a little bit of this might be over five thousand, or it's gonna be under. So instead of having to come back to council, I propose that we're approving thirty-six thousand for a hundred, if that's what it's ready to be. Let them go ahead and make the purchase along the way. And if it squeaks over five thousand, not necessarily come back to council. It just slows up the process.
Okay, well, that's very helpful and definitely can help us to then start the procurement department again. Okay, appreciate that.
There'll be, yeah, there'll be a contract if situations come up.
Plus, we got thirty-one thousand, so we're gonna have to approve another, closer to five thousand dollars. So at that point, yeah. Great question.
Okay, and then finally, engineering standards. This is related to our second lead ordinance. Two four one B, amending the regulations related to public right of ways and the maintaining of utilities in our public right of ways. Specifically, we met with the water district yesterday. We were able to all agree on what this change is and answer questions. It was a very good meeting. And so those questions and concerns that we got addressed, one of the things that they wanted me to mention and we will address in our standards when we do the update, because a lot of our standards that we want to look at, was a tolerance for a quarter of an inch of the bow box is a quarter of an inch above the pavement. We will make adjustments if it's more than a quarter of an inch. So I'm just saying that because I know Bill Genway is here and he was, it was a good meeting on the idea of that. So, but. So in the right of way, in the streets, there's crowns, there's bow box, there's. In the street, sorry. We give a tolerance. What happens is if you get too low, then it creates the chug to chug, you can take a drive over. But if they're too high, the snowplow hits them, so we had to work out that. So, but more comprehensively is probably me mentioning that Lisa and actually Scott are working on engineering standard updates. And this is where it's very important that we identify where those standards are for all of our utilities and right of ways. So it has to do with compaction, you know, asphalt mix, sidewalk construction trees, so we'll talk about this. Okay, I'm gonna go on to number four. So we have kind of internally talked about this, and I wanted to share with the council. We're really encouraging agencies that wanna make a presentation to try to keep it to ten slides in ten minutes and allow five minutes for your questions and answers. We've all seen presentations that go a very long time, and then at the end of the presentation, there's no opportunity for you to ask questions. So I'm just letting you know, we're, a lot of public agencies want to provide information to council today. This ten slide is kind of consistent with what we're encouraging them to do. So if you're on board with that. And then finally, oh, I'm sorry, not finally, I have Harvard Road. We won't all up, so, okay, there, I'm sorry. Harvard Road, all good news. If we wanted, if we wanted to be in the best place we could be for this project to move forward, it's where we are. We're cautiously optimistic because we don't know for sure how it's gonna come out of the legislature. We also don't know for sure what the governor's going to do. But our projects, both Harvard and Henry, are both on the list. And, excuse me, March twelfth, we should know how it got, so it's out of committee, we're on the list, it's going in for a vote, and though by, it's March twelfth. And then I think the governor has thirty days to decide. So right now, our projects are intact and they're at the same funding level that they were this time last year. So I think it's good news, but without some work. Yes. So just for, that's a great question. The whole project, according to Washington, is Harvard to Harvard, but Henry in the middle, so all of it is in there. And then finally, dates to remember. So March seventeenth, which is our next council meeting. The workshop is dedicated to the corridor study. So this is Lisa and our consultant making a presentation about what we learned about traffic flow and hotspots and solutions in our community. So what's going along with corridors. And again, those corridors are Appleway, Mission, Country Vista, Mission on the North Side, Harvard, River Lake Road. Those are our, kind of theirs that are predominant in these settings. If we get the work, if we get the information ahead of time, we simply send it to them?
I don't believe we're gonna have the information ahead of time. This is a present, it's for, and it's only on Country Vista. Other corridor are coming later. Country Vista's ahead of the rest.
So only Country does. Thank you for correcting that. And so the consultant is making the presentation, so make sure you bring your questions because we would really like our technical experts to answer the questions instead of us. The library will be closed on March twenty-fifth for one to six for staff training. Eastern account is April eleventh. The Volki Waste Event, it's a Saturday, April eighteenth, it's at Town Square. And that is with, oh, wait, excuse me. Council retreat, April nineteenth. Farmer's Market opens May sixteenth. And then Community Tennis, we have a local individual, we have a president, a local president in our community that gives pre tennis lessons. So his last name is Wes, I think it's very West. And it starts on the sixteenth at Rocky Hill Park. Definitely the kids are split up into two groups on Saturday morning, the adults, I think, are Monday, maybe another day. We're, there are a lot of volunteers in our community, so.
Any questions for Katie? Hearing that, a little launch action, Senator.
Senator General one, motion to approve February eighteen, two thousand twenty, city council minutes.
On favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Motion, motion to approve March third, two thousand twenty vouchers, about one hundred and twenty-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars, ninety-six cents.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
opposed.
General Business, motion authorized purchase of Club Car Ranger Picker, Picker, and Picker was seventy in an amount of eighteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents.
Second.
Go around the room, I'll just count, any questions? Karen?
No questions.
A quick question is it now, in relation to the powers used and the calculations for average, is that kind of a standard? Okay, thank you. Okay, on favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Motion to approve, General Business two, motion authorized Mayor to sign the mutual agreement extension for one year of Rose Products Inc. For the crack seating in an amount, now to exceed thirty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars per annum.
Second.
Questions on this one? On favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Number three, motion authorized Mayor to sign the mutual agreement extension for one year for triple A sweeping LLC, the street sweeping in an amount, now to exceed seventy thousand dollars per annum.
Second.
Questions?
No.
Okay, he's got losses, we talked about three sleep before he had actual sweep. And I was impressed, I felt that I feel I'm talking about, when they're gonna come down, I don't, there is ever gonna come down, I was starting fresh, washing my grubs, my head down.
I would love to answer.
Use them all the way.
So we do have a, we do have a routine for our materials and residential streets, but I'll let, you even answer your question.
Triple A's very busy that time of year, this time of year. I can coordinate with them and see if we can maybe narrow down zones. So that way they know when they're going into zones. But first, they're gonna, excuse me, start on collectors and materials. So give me a little time and I can work with them and maybe come back to you. Well, it's more for the whole city. We, we do our, our snow plowing, our snow plowing. We have a map, which is broken out into zone one and zone two. And so I say, if you give me a little bit of time, I can probably work with them, that way we can coordinate zones, and then I can try and back to you much more.
Did you guys get just pushed out through your.
As soon as I opened my hand, I could push that one by being screen. And just for general knowledge is, we do our materials once a month, and we do our residential twice a year. Beginning of the summer and kind of towards the summer, or beginning of spring and the regular season.
Just nice to know, sort of, I'm sure.
I agree.
Very question, thank you.
Yeah, just in general, as I read the, the terms we're using here, not to exceed, that includes sales tax and any other.
Right?
Yes, thank you.
On favor?
Aye.
opposed?
General Business four, motion authorized purchase of a RTX series UTV in an amount of twenty-five thousand, five hundred and ten dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Second.
Questions? On favor?
Aye.
opposed?
General Business five, authorized purchase of a Husker Super Z mower in an amount of fourteen thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars and forty-seven cents.
Second.
Questions?
Oh, yeah, actually somebody said, they're saying, hold it, how could a, let's name a mower. Who would buy a Husker Super Z? Steve, is that what, talk to you, you wanted this one?
I was a wife to Greg, I was.
It's a good mower. A little Husker Super.
Yeah, that's good. Any questions? Okay, on favor?
Aye.
opposed?
And last number six, authorized purchase of a tilt and dangle trailer in an amount of ten thousand, sixty-eight dollars and seventy cents.
Second.
Questions? On favor?
Aye.
opposed? Second regarding, what's your name?
Armistress number seventy-eight A, City of Liberty Lakes, Spokane County, Washington. An ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, in the city of Liberty Lake, according to seventy-eight, regarding the acceptance streets and rights of white improvements from Spokane County, and providing for other matters properly related to.
Motion to approve.
Second.
On favor of, oh, sorry, citizen comments on this specific topic? Not hearing any?
I have a question.
Yes.
Thank you for allowing that. I didn't notice any River District streets in the list of streets that were in your package. I didn't see Aladdin Cop Gil. You and I would like to be included in that, so. Go ahead.
If I may, we are only amending the ordinance to take out private streets that were inadvertently included in the original ordinance. This is not a comprehensive list or others, and River District was not part of the city at the time that this ordinance was passed.
It's to correct the fact that we have private streets that listed in the ordinance as a public street.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, no further comments? Okay, on favor of ordinance number seven, get A, raise your hand? Six, seven, eight, sorry. I wish we had things right next to anybody. I'm used to seeing them over there. All right, next ordinance, Sam?
Ordinance number two four one B, City of Liberty Lakes, Spokane County, Washington. An ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, amending ordinance two four one A of the City of Liberty Lake, regulating public rights of white activity within the City of Liberty Lake.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Comments from council? Questions? Citizen comments on ordinance number two forty-one B? Not hearing any? On favor, raise your hand? Six, seven, eight. We gotta read that hand. Introduction about county and general.
Okay, so we, as we mentioned, we're having a six P M workshop on the country justice corner analysis. We had a presentation by our city attorney on the water management meeting act. We also have two tentative agreements. One is gonna be for on-call landscape maintenance and on-call for harbor services. So this is tentative, we haven't nailed down those contracts yet, so it is a possibility to get them down, if doubt. We have the contract with Winter Blow and Voice for ten thousand dollars. We also will be, okay, let me ask RJ. RJ, with the lease renewal, would, would he be ready for this? Okay, whenever we're new on these things.
Citizen comments? Orders? Okay.
Not so much comment, just kind of. This mentoring program we're doing with the city, that would really help. Surinata has a problem getting people qualified or otherwise. Nobody wants, I don't know if they don't wanna work in Surinata or they just don't know what it is. So they get some high school kids to come out and be part of the mentoring system for introduction of what we do. It'd be very helpful. So if you.
Okay, that'd be good. Oh, we can't be a passenger.
No, we have buzz. This is a point of information, we just hired a new class four stewardess officer. How many female operators we have? And two top candidates for both women. So I think things are changing in our industry to the better, I think. So I think the mentoring is gonna be great. Good for us.
Yeah, I'll talk to them about it, absolutely.
Thanks a lot.
Any other citizen comments? Okay, we're going to move into the GPO session at eight oh nine. We're running real estate, it's like ten minutes.